Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I'd like to welcome to everyone to our public work session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke here, Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard, Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
City Manager Chapman, ma'am, would you please proceed with your items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth Family. We have four presentations tonight, and the first one will be from Mark Palmerchuk, the Director of Parks and Recreation, along with Stephen Jenkins, the interim police chief. And they will be presenting information regarding National Night Out. The goal of the presentation is to inform and encourage citizens to gather and support their respective Portsmouth communities in which they live and love. I'll turn it over to the two of you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Chief Jenkins is on his way. I'm going to do my best without him. I didn't even see him coming. Okay, very good. He is here. The Police Department spearheads the National Night Out event. However, there is support from multiple city departments, including Parks and Recreation. And this year's theme is the strength and courage of Portsmouth. Next slide, please. Tonight, we'll give you a brief history of National Night Out. We'll give you an overview of what the event is, specific details for the 2022 event here in Portsmouth, and then, of course, we'll open it up to any questions. Next slide. Brief history. National Night Out began in 1970 when a community watch from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, noticed a need for a shared platform. He saw a lot of communities doing the same things and trying to connect with law enforcement. However, they did not have connectivity within themselves. So in 1981, the National Association of Town Watch was established. Three years later, in 1984, the National Association of Town Watch introduced the first National Night Out campaign. That first one had two and a half million neighbors across 400 communities in 23 different states. Fast forward to 2022, there are now 38 million neighbors across 1,600 communities in all 50 states, U.S. territories, and in military bases worldwide. Virginia does do a very good job participating in the event. There are 117 cities and towns in Virginia this year that will be participating. Overview of the National Night Out. So what is this event for those of you who have not seen it before? It is America's night to stomp out crime and take back the community. National Night Out is an excellent opportunity to enhance partnerships between citizens, businesses, and the law enforcement agencies that we have here. This collaboration will help make the city of Portsmouth a safer place to live, work, and raise a family. The goal is to involve as many citizens, businesses, stakeholders, organizations, and neighborhoods as possible in the fight to rid our communities of crime. So some specific details for the '22 National Night Out here in Portsmouth. The main ones, the when, where, and what. It has always held on the first Tuesday in August. This year will be next week on Tuesday, August 2nd. It will include Portsmouth Civic Leagues, Neighborhood Watches, churches, businesses, and city departments joining forces in one central location to send a message that crime is not welcome in our city. The event will be held at Portsmouth City Park, located at 5 Corporal J.M. Williams Avenue, and it will take place from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. that evening. National Night Out will boast a large carnival-style event this year with the goal of bringing together citizens from all over the city to unite against crime. So some specific activities and vendors that'll be out there. We will have live music by one of our excellent local bands, Better By Tuesday. They'll be performing from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. We will have food trucks on site with food available for purchase. There'll be family activities to include bounce houses, games, canine demonstrations, pet adoption, touch a truck, which the kids usually love, along with face painting, raffles, and open-air photo booth. There will be snow cones and cotton candy, costume characters, the mountain patrol. We're also trying to get the nightingale to be on site. For those who don't know what that is, that is the helicopter that liflights people in emergencies. And then, my favorite part of this, I think, this year, something new, is a charity dunk tank and the charity pie in the face. The good news with that is all the proceeds from those two charity activities are going to go right back to Portsmouth, to the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. Some of the specific vendors that we have, the Virginia Department of Health will be on site with accessible COVID vaccinations. The voter registrar staff will be on site registering folks to vote. City departments and church groups will be there, along with Bonds Accords, the Portsmouth Humane Society, Mercy Drops, Stop the Violence 757, and a host of Neighborhood Watches, along with, of course, the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. And I believe Chief Jenkins also had a handout of all the vendors so you all could get a really good idea of who's going to be out there. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerchuk. Excellent presentation. I just want to make sure, did you get confirmation from majority of our civic leagues? Because I know at times they still have their stuff going on. Did everyone in unison agree to be at City Park that we?
There is a host of them that will be out there. There are two civic leagues that are still doing standalone events in their communities. The Brighton Prentice Park Civic League will be having an event at Highland and Lansing Park, and then the Gosport, Wilson Ward Gosport Civic League will have an event at Maplewood Park.
All right, thank you. And that's what I wanted to know. And also, sir, do we have a rain date in the event that there could be inclement weather?
Not at this time.
Just thought I'd ask.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our second presentation will be by the Director of Behavioral Healthcare Services, Nathan Woodard, and in conjunction with Mental Health Awareness Month, he will be providing information for services in which the city provides its citizens.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Woodard, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Behavioral Healthcare Services is the public provider of mental health, substance use, and developmental disability services for our citizens here in the city of Portsmouth. We are divided in three different divisions. We have short-term services, long-term services, and our developmental disability services. First, we have same-day access, mental health, substance use, outpatient therapy, prevention services, medication management, our methadone clinic, substance use case management, and peer support services. Next slide. Our same-day access service is our gateway into our services. This is where individuals will come in to get an assessment to determine what their needs are. This assessment is done by a licensed therapist. Once that assessment is done, then the individual is referred to that respective program. Mental health case management, mental health and substance use disorder, outpatient therapy. In this program, we provide therapy for individuals, families, adults, and youth alike. Individuals are diagnosed with a serious mental illness or a substance use disorder. Prevention Services. Our prevention services focus on reducing suicide, underage drinking and smoking, and opiate use. We also provide HIV services, prevention services, within our prevention services. This is where we do our testing, as well as education for the community. Then we have medication management. This is provided by licensed psychiatrists for youth, adolescents, and adults. And I'm proud to say, right now, we have two clinical licensed psychologists that can provide, psychiatrists that provide services to kids, which helps opens the services that we can do for our children. Next slide, please. Our opiate replacement therapy. This is where individuals receive the narcotic medication methadone or suboxone to address an opiate addiction. Participants also receive individual and group counseling. Next, we have our substance use case management. This assists individuals and their families in assessing resources to promote stability in our community. Next, our peer support services. This is staff with lived experience, and that they are also certified through the Commonwealth of Virginia to provide support and psychoeducation, who also assist individuals through their journey towards recovery. Our peers play a huge role in our service delivery, because we may have individuals that are reluctant to come in and talk to us or come in to start services. And our peers, because of the lived experience, they can make that connection that oftentimes we can't. Next slide, please. Now we have our long-term services. Within our long-term services, we have mental health case management, jail diversion case management, emergency services, shelter plus care program, our project for assistance in transitioning from homelessness, Opportunity House, and our Hampton Roads Regional Jail Mental health case management, we have six individuals that have a serious mental illness or a serious emotional disturbance, and assessing community resources, again, to help them and their families for them to maintain in the least restrictive environment as possible. Next, we have our jail diversion case management. Individuals are assisted with obtaining and to maintain services to minimize the recidivism by removing barriers. These are persons that have been arrested with misdemeanors, that may have exacerbated mental health issues, and the last place that we want them to be is in jail. So this service assists them in linking into the services that we have here in the community so they don't have to be incarcerated. Emergency Services. Emergency Services are provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This is the service wherein which if you have a person that have a psychiatric emergency, they are contacted to do an initial assessment to determine if the individual needs to be hospitalized against his or her will. If so, they will begin that process. If they don't, then we will look at alternative services, many of the services that we just spoke of, to help them, again, to maintain in the community. Our shelter plus care program. Individuals will be placed in permanent supportive housing while they maintain enrollment in mental health and substance use disorder treatment and adhere to HUD requirements. Right now, we are servicing 48 families and individuals in our shelter plus care program that were at one time chronically homeless. Then we have our path case management service. This case manager completes community outreach to Portsmouth homeless residents and help link them to services through VHS and other community resources. Next slide, please. Opportunity House, which is our psychosocial rehabilitation program. This will provide training and assistance through day support services in an environment designed to build confidence in those skills that they need, again, to maintain in the community. Hampton Roads Regional Jail Programs. We have two programs there. We have our community-oriented reentry program, or better known as our CORE grant. With our CORE grant, we assist individuals in linking them to the therapeutic community that they have within the jail, as well as linking them with our peer services as they transition out of the jail. The second grant we have there is our forensic discharge planning. This is where case managers assist individuals in transitioning into the community from the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Next slide, please. Lastly, we have our developmental disability services. There are two services there. We have our support coordination, which is case management, and our supportive habilitation occupational program, better known as SHOP. Intellectual Disability Case Management Services help individuals and families assess services and supports specific to their needs. Again, these are individuals that are diagnosed with an intellectual disability or a developmental disability. Next, our supportive habilitation occupational program, better known as SHOP. Persons also have to have an intellectual disability or developmental disability to participate in this program. We help individuals to learn skills, to assess community resources, and provide training and assistance through day support services, such as helping them learn how to cook, clean, have outings, just participate in activities with their friends. The last slide, there was a question in reference to the budget allocation for the city when it comes to behavioral health, and right now, that allocation is 5%. Are there any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. As far as council is concerned, one of the issues is funding. Staff-wise, how are you considering coming out of this COVID pandemic and the significant mental health challenges that were already there prior to COVID and that have been exasperated by COVID? So where are you staff-wise as far as the need?
Well, fortunately, but unfortunately, there's a staff shortage throughout the state, especially when it comes to mental health services. One of the programs that has been heavily impacted with us is the emergency services. In order to provide this service, you must be a licensed clinician. And what we're seeing throughout the state, they are very limited. Currently, we're short-staffed, but we have other staff that have pitched in that work in other services. We understand that that's not sustainable, but the state is assisting us in recruitment and retaining.
So as far as we've seen a significant impact on the youth, how are these services being coordinated with the schools?
One of the things that we're doing now is looking at developing a program to actually go in to provide clinical services with the school. Traditionally, there have been more counseling services, such as one service is called therapeutic day treatment, that the state used for several years. But now, what the state is moving to, moving towards, is more clinical services. So we're in the process of looking at hiring a clinical therapist that will be assigned to one of the middle schools here that will provide therapy not only to the kids there, but to the families as well.
So are there any policy or funding issues that you see that should be communicated to the city manager, to be communicated to us so that we can address some of these issues that you're, or challenges that you have?
Not at this time. I think it's more so about us finding the right people to fit. Again, it is very difficult to find licensed clinicians, not just here in our city, unfortunately, but it's going on around the entire state. So as we continue to look at out-of-the-box ways in advertising and recruitment, I am very hopeful that we will get there.
Okay. And the last question I have, as far as the community knowing about these services, how is it communicated to the community?
Well, actually, next month, April 15th, we are in the throes of starting a media blast campaign that we will have billboards on 264 that is going to advertise what we do in VHS and also the new 988 National Crisis Hotline. We will also be targeting our veterans here, because we have a high population of veterans here, to let them know the services that we're doing here. We're also looking at doing things on social media, TV, radio, as well as streaming, to get the word out that we are here and we're here for service, and we want to assist our citizens that are recovering from mental health and substance use disorders. We also provide different campaigns that we go to civic leagues, we go to the schools, we go to the rec centers to pass out our information, and also to be a part of presentations to let them know what our services entail and how to engage in our services.
Right. So when I spoke earlier about coordinating with the schools, so that information about the services that parents can tap into, how is that communicated through the school system?
Right now, our prevention services do a lot through the school counselors, as well as other entities in the school, but right now, a lot of that is communicated through the school counselors so that as they have kids that have those type of issues, then they can link them with us and/or their parents.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor then. Councilwoman Lucasberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. How does our budget allocation compare to similar-sized cities in the region here? I guess Hampton would be a good comparison.
Actually, it's comparable to other cities with the number of citizens that we have here in Portsmouth. It is comparable to those cities.
How about the services? Are we lacking anything that some others have that maybe we should have?
Actually, not. I try to make sure that we can go for any service that we can to assist the citizens here. So anytime the state opens up licenses to provide different services, we certainly look at the viability and how it will work here, and if so, we go for it.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Lucasberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Woodard, for the presentation. Good to see you today under this circumstance. I was one of the council members who had asked about having a presentation, because this month is minority mental health, and a lot of times, we don't hear about it, and glad to hear about the billboard that's going to be coming up next month. But are there any other things that you're doing for the month of July, for it to be Awareness Month? And I guess, follow-up on that question, a lot of people think that these services are always for persons of a certain income level, or you have to have a Medicaid funding. Are there any cost or income limitations on persons who could come and seek this assistance?
I'll start with the latter. Because we are a public health agency, we do not turn people away. If a person has insurances, that's fine. We will take their insurances. But those persons that are indigent, we do have a sliding scale, so we will assist anyone that comes into our door to provide services to them. In reference to any type of campaigns that we have going on this month, we do have a campaign that's going to go on with our prevention services in a couple of weeks. I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the campaign, but it is in reference to Minority Mental Health Month. I can make sure that is sent out to everyone so that you guys are aware.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Are you losing staff because the surrounding cities pay more for the same positions?
Councilman Battle, I would say at one time, we did. Currently, our vacancy rate at VHS hovers anywhere between 18% to 20%. However, in comparison to the rest of the region, it's at 25%. So we're doing pretty well. So that issue hasn't been as prevalent as it had been previously. We still have some, but it's not as large.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. How you doing, Mr. Woodard?
Well, yourself?
All right. I do commend you for your peer support services. I think I met some of your staff members during a reset walk, and they gave me a brief summary of what they do and some of the experiences they have and how they're sharing their experiences with people who need this type of help. So I do commend you guys for having this service. But my question is, the jail diversion case management, how do you seek out persons that qualify for these specific services?
For our jail diversion program, those referrals come from the magistrate's office, as well as probation and parole and community corrections. So anytime that they have someone that they know that has a misdemeanor that also is diagnosed with a mental health issue, they will contact us. We would do an initial assessment to determine if that person is able to continue with our services, and then that process starts.
So is the magistrate the only one who can refer people? People can't come sign up if they have a loved one that may need such services?
No, it's not just the magistrate. It's through probation and parole, as well as community corrections. But if you do have a loved one that's in the legal system and you think that they can benefit, they can also come to our office and go through same-day access and be assessed and get into our services as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, just to revisit an issue that was raised earlier pertaining to the funding comparable by population size.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned that we are right in line with other cities. Is it prudent to analyze that along population size, or do we look at that along such things as poverty, income level, housing? And given those differences across the cities, where we would stand funding-wise? Because we have a significant issue with poverty here, and I would think that we would probably be funding at a higher rate than other cities considering that. And so if that analysis has not been done, I think that would be something to see if we are really funding at the level we should. And the other issue that ties into that is, you were saying, staff and recruitment. Just curious, as far as the recruitment efforts that are done by the department, how engaged are we with the local colleges?
To start with the latter, our human resources department has engaged with the community colleges here. We have gotten several staff persons, particularly nurses, that we were able to hire from those colleges. So that has gone pretty well. In reference to looking at other factors, such as poverty level, so forth and so on, I'm not sure if those are factors that the state looks at when it comes to funding. I do know that one of the biggest is population, but I can certainly ask that question.
So on your diagram, that 5%, that was state budget allocation. That's the city?
Yes, sir.
Right. So that's what I was concerned about, if what the city may need to be doing, because if it's comparable as to what other cities are doing that do not have the same type of issues we have, then that comes back to the council issue I was raising as far as funding.
Yes, sir.
And so I would think that should be communicated to the city manager, something that might want to come to the attention of council if we're actually funding this from the perspective that we should, not just comparing to other populations, but those other issues that have direct impacts on mental health.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Just in reference to the funding, I just wanted everyone to know that the state funds 95% of VHS's budget, and the city picks up the other 5%. So that's the current allegation. The state provides $14.8 million, and the city's contribution is $715,000.
That's how much?
$715,000. Okay.
Right. So is that a formula-based funding, because just because we're at 5%? The issue is, do we need to look at increasing that, given the issues we have here in Portsmouth?
We will certainly look into it, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And one of the questions I have, Mr. Woodard, is, in the event, let's say if we had a catastrophic event and we needed, you know, more support from your area, is there a contingency, perhaps? I know you said that there are staffing challenges. To use, like, local providers, maybe, to augment or complement what you have in place to meet the need?
Absolutely. And a great example of that is the tragedy that we went through in the city of Virginia Beach a couple years ago. So anytime you have an event of that magnitude, the state does bring in additional resources through. throughout the state, different counselors and therapists to, to provide support and counseling and therapy to anyone that was a part of, of that event. So yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And thank you for providing that information, and thank you for the work that you and your department do each and every day. We're grateful to have your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Our next presentation will be from the Assistant Director of Planning, Ms. Meg Pittinger, and she will give a presentation on the policy and information concerning honorary street naming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city manager indicated, I am here tonight to talk to you about a draft policy for honorary street name designation, should council determine that is a policy that they would like to adopt. Next slide, thank you. So the purpose of the briefing is to talk about the objectives of the program, the background of how we got here, what the definition of an honorary street designation would be, the description of the signs very briefly, qualifications for individuals or groups, the application process, and then costs associated. Next slide. So the objective would be to ensure that street name designations are honorary and at the discretion of city council, to ensure that streets continue to retain their official name and are easily recognizable, to ensure that the street name designations are accepted by the community and consistent with city values, and, and maybe most importantly, to encourage the recognition of individuals and groups for their contribution to the community. Next slide. So the background is, the city does currently allow citizens to request the name, to change the official name of a street. Typically, this has always been a permanent designation change. The city council always does have the option to make it honorary, but typically, these have been permanent. In the city code, in part of Chapter 33.1, which is the subdivision ordinance, this section that you see indicates that names of existing streets or subdivisions shall not be changed, except as approved by the governing body. This is the only place in city code that talks about renaming of streets. There's no other place in the code that talks about it. Next slide. So the definition, and city staff does often get requests or concerns from citizens wondering if we had an honorary street naming policy, so we do get that quite often. So honorary street names are intended to recognize and honor groups and individuals that have a citywide contribution impact on the city. The placement would typically be above the standard street name signs, but it would not change officially the street names. And everyone would need to change their address and, and all of those things. It's a way that you can honor groups and individuals without officially changing the name of the street, which sometimes can have negative impact on existing businesses and residents, because they would all have to change, you know, their addresses and all of their accounts. It just provides another option for city council in order to honor, you know, individuals or groups that would qualify. Thank you. So next slide, we have qualifications that are proposed. You know, the individual group would have to have some historical, cultural significance. They would want to have a positive impact on city, state, or country, and it would be well documented and, and known throughout the community that, that they would have this positive impact. It could also be that they are donating money or land for city use. That could be a reason that you're honoring people. Next slide, please. So the description would be, again, they would be located on top of the existing signs. They'd be double-faced, so you'd see them from both directions, same size as a standard city sign. We're proposing that they would be brown with white lettering, with a white border, which is typical what you see in other places that have these types of designations. And they would obviously only be on local streets. We can't go and like rename the interstate or any sort of state street, so it'd be on just local streets. Next slide, thank you. The application process would be that, you know, they would submit an application to the director of planning. There'd be a written justification go along with that. We would ask that if they're honoring an individual, that we would have the family or the estate to consent to that, you know, making sure they're on board. And then an application fee that would be determined by city council. And again, the written justification should show that it would be consistent with the criteria and the policy and, and what those contributions to the city would have been. And then, again, written documentation is going to be, would be, you know, part of what the application that would be required. Then planning staff would take a look at, at the application, just to make sure it meets the basic criteria, and then a staff committee that would be designated by the city manager. Typically, you'd look at like the deputy city manager, the planning director, the city engineer, would then make a recommendation directly to city council, wouldn't go through any other body in between that. And then city council could approve, they could reject, or they could propose some different designation if they had something different in mind for this location. And then city council obviously has the sole authority to approve the designation request. And again, they can either be permanent, or they can be temporary for a specified period of time if council chooses that. Costs typically would be, the costs associated with design, fabrication, and installation of the signs, and also some, you know, maintenance for the life of the designation, and signs would not be installed until the payments are received. So the next steps that staff would be looking at is any feedback that city council might have, or any changes desired, and, you know, in what direction that city council would like for staff to go, whether you would like, you know, to have this policy be adopted, and then direct staff to then implement it. And with that, I will stand by for any questions that you might have.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Pittinger. Thanks for the presentation. You know, when I brought this up to council, I think it was three years ago, so it's taken a long time, and we're still in the talking stage about it. I know other cities have it. I thought it was important because I think in about 10 years ago, we, we, meaning council, had designated some honorary recipients to have a, a street designated in their honor. I think the people were Gene Vincent in the Blue Caps.
Yes, sir.
Tommy Fasenda, and, who was a band member, and Pepe Owens, who was the owner and operator of a, an establishment back in the 60s called The Lighthouse, off of Victory Boulevard. But the designation the council adopted said that they would be honored with an honorary street name in the same location as Bill Deal, and also a park in that vicinity would be designated. Well, that never happened. That would, that would be quite a long addition to Bill Deal Street, even if it did. But council did, you know, approve that, so that hasn't been done. But there are many other recipients, potential recipients, and I think it's something we should establish, and I would like to think that the, the street sign itself would certainly be maybe a little more ornate than just the regular, you know, general street name. I think, I know Newport News has honorary, honorary streets, and, and their sign is quite attractive, and it's no way you can get that confused with the, the official street name. But, yeah, hopefully, this is something that others will see the value in, and we can finally move ahead with it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And we can look into, see what they've got in Newport News as well.
Thanks.
Dr. Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
I would hope, I would hope that my colleagues before we would pass this, that we would look at the cost issue on page, you don't have the page numbers up here, but the page that pertains to cost is the third, third from the back. It says, "If approved by city council, the requister shall pay," and it has all of the cost burden placed on the requister. I could see where that could prohibit certain groups or persons from wanting to be involved. And also, we talk about covering the future maintenance costs. If it's going to be on the city post, that, that's a city post, then it, it should be maintained by the city because you also could get into where you go in certain areas, and they're not maintained the same, once again, because of that. So I would hope council would revisit that. Also, before persons are approved, I would hope that there would be some type of investigation into certain types of associations or entities that they were involved, involved in that were practicing issues that have not been consistent with uplifting the community. So I would hope those type of backgrounds would be investigated, and that be a part of the policy as well, if, if that is council desire.
City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Woodard, just for reference, the application fee for a permanent street sign is $350, but that does not include covering the actual cost of the sign.
Okay.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. And this is just for visual purposes. Will, will it be a double sign, like two signs on top of each other, or would it just be something, a complete overhaul, I mean, overhaul with just a, a line item on it?
Typically, what you see is the regular street sign, you know, in its standard color, and then above that, you would have the brown and white sign. It would say honorary, and then have, you know, where the name or the, of the group would, you know, be on both sides, but it would typically be right above. So you'd have the regular street sign, and then the honorary, with the honorary designation on it directly above that in a different color.
Is, is there any way for us to get those in an email or whatnot, just to see that?
We can send some examples.
And like I said, just not that example, but even the Newport News example and other cities that may have these honorary displays.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I'm not understanding why we would lay such a reward on a person and then say, "Oh, by the way, it's going to cost you this, it's going to cost you that, it's going to cost you that for us to maintain it." It kind of doesn't go together. If a person is deserving, they shouldn't have to put skin in a game. If they're deserving, that says that for years and decades, and on time after time, you have contributed to the well-being of the city. So, you know, I'm kind of not at ease with the fee part of it.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, then. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Pittinger. I guess my, my question was, if this is going to be an ordinance or resolution, do we just go in and re-adopt something in the city code, or we just go in and take this Section 33.1-559 and just vote on this one section, and what took it so long to bring it to the table? Because I see the cost issues, I see the background issues, I see the approval process, so what has been, I think, Councilman Moody mentioned 10 years ago, or, you know, some time back, that this was brought to the table, and what happened, why we're here now.
So this would not be an ordinance change. It would just be a policy that the council would adopt, and, and again, you know, direct the city manager and then staff to, you know, to implement this policy. It wouldn't require an ordinance change, which also means you could just then come back and change it whenever you felt was appropriate. Obviously, things like cost, you know, any of that can be changed at, you know, however council desires, you know, in, in the entire policy or on a case-by-case basis. Council can certainly make that determination, you know, however you direct staff to, to do that forward. This has been around for a while, and in the past, it just has been directed to not bring it back before council, and, and, you know, and now we have, you know, a, a good shepherd to bring, to bring it forward, should council, you know, determine that this is a direction that we want to be able to, to honor people. Because like I said, staff does get questions a lot of, "Does the city have, you know, a policy?" And we just have never had an official policy with criteria and guidance, you know, to go through, and this would, would put that in place that, you know, that you would have some, at least some criteria that people would know a person needs to meet, and that, you know, council would have something to judge it based on not just yea or nay.
And do we have any requests that are pending, or any communities that have made a request for honorary street names?
Not honorary currently. There is a permanent street name change that you will be seeing at your August meeting, but there's no, no honorary ones that are in the pipeline right now. Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. When we look, look at other cities, whether they have one or not, I, I use Newport News as an example, but we need to see, also check into what their process is, and whether they're charging the recipient. I, I tend to agree with Councilman Battle, you know, to designate an honorary street name, then send a bill later is, I don't think cool. Thanks.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I think, I think the key to this is going to be a benign criteria, because that's going to be the most, the driving figure to, to the whole thing. So we're going to have to put together some criteria, and it, it has to be a criteria that's inclusive to all the citizens, and you can have a guy that played football and never contributed anything to the city, and never wanted anything to do with the city. So our criteria has to be very, very conducive to the essence of what we are trying to create here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pittinger, I did have a question. I recall when we changed the name of Court Street. I think it used to be Commerce Park.
Port Center Parkway.
Port Center Parkway, that's right.
Yes, sir.
And I remember getting a call from some folks over at Massimo Zanetti at the time, because, as you probably were aware, when the street changed to Court Street, they had to change all of their materials.
Yes, sir.
And so I can understand the point that you're making about when you change a street name, permanent street name, then people have to make a lot of changes, particularly residents and businesses, so that does make sense.
And, you know, I mean, there are some street name changes where there are no businesses or residents that are actually using that address, and so there's minimal impact, but there are others that obviously have lots of, of impacts, you know, and, and again, by having an honorary designation, you can avoid some of, of that, you know, that it doesn't change anybody's actual address. You know, the former building officials always say, "People need to get their magazines," you know, and, and so all of those accounts. So again, it's a way, council obviously always still can have the option to make a permanent street name change, but it gives you another option to be able to honor somebody without having to have maybe that pain and suffering that might occur.
Thank you, Ms. Pittinger.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our fourth presentation will be a follow-up from the Director of Engineering, Mr. James Wright, and he will be, be presenting a follow-up of the Port Norfolk Recreation Center relative to questions from council's previous work session.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice, no, Vice Mayor, sorry, member of the city council.
Evening, sir.
Giving you an update following the last work session to answer some of the questions that our city council presented. So just as a reminder from the last work session, the repair cost for the, for the recreation center was about 2.35 million. That was interior and exterior repairs. To get it suitable just for voting alone was about $650,000. So the questions from the last work session were, "How big is the facility?", "Does repair, what does it take to bring it up to modern recreational standards?", "What would be the cost for a smaller facility on the same site?", "What would be the considerations for privatization", and "What are the circumstances that led to how the facility got in its current condition?" So, looking at the cost to modernize facility, looked at some comparable estimates we've had on newer recreation facilities, and coupled those with the repair costs, you end up with the total cost for modernization of about 3.25 the total cost for modernization of about 3.25 million. Looking at what it would cost for a new recreation center, the existing facility is about 20,000 square feet. If you assume that a new recreation center is about 5,000 square feet, looking at the cost to do demolition, site work, and construction, and then throw some contingency in there, you arrive at a figure of about 4.6 million. And then to compare all three, the repairs just for voting, 650,000. To rehabilitate and modernize, 3.25 million. And for the new facility is 4.6 million. So looking at privatization, as we mentioned at the last work session, using the former Shea Terrace Elementary as a model, the building was converted into a 21-unit independent living complex for seniors by a private developer in 2001. Property transferred in March 2021 for $700,000. Its current assessment is 662,800. The building is just shy of 30,000 square feet. If we were to move in this direction, there is potential to develop an RFP to determine if there's interest, to see if you got the proper type of developer in there to do what you would want him to do with that building. And there is a potential for the developer, if that is the route he chooses to go, to get some sort of tax credits because the site is in historic district. And how do we get here? In 2017, the facility was closed due to declining attendance, maintenance needs, and other concerns. At the retreat in 2020, city council retreat, there is a recommendation put on the table to sell the property and incentivize rehabilitation. At a meeting, city council meeting shortly thereafter, it took a step back and decided to go back out to the community and get some neighborhood input. And then the pandemic hit just shortly after, and that marched, and all city buildings were closed. Once city buildings reopened in June 2021, the primary focus was re-establishing those facilities that were, that were open prior to closing and getting those up to snuff and making those safe for participation. See, as I said, that facility was closed, that was not part of that primary focus, that initial push. This facility has been part of the DARPA discussions along with several other facilities, including some for the schools, as far as what to do moving forward is how to address those facilities and potentially bring those facilities back up to snuff. So with that, I ask for any type of questions and additional discussion from the city council.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wright. Mine is just a comment to my colleagues. I would hope before we get brought down to any discussion on the repairs, that we would at least direct the city manager to move forward with an RFP so that we could see if there is some interest there in privatizing the property, and then we'd be able to make some type of comparative assessment of which direction to go. So I would hope we would at least look at that option to possibly put that property on the tax records.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or considerations? Councilman Battle, so you have the floor.
The figures that we're dealing with are hypothetical and guestimates and estimates and so forth, but we really, although we can use that as a guideline, there are agencies that can do the same work we're asking for for half the cost. So although we have these numbers, this shouldn't be a working parameter for us because there's something called reality, and that's putting the bids out and the lowest bid and the assessment of the, its ability to meet the criteria and so forth could come in way under these numbers. So in the future, I think we really need to make the public aware that these are assessments. But when you're doing the RFPs and putting these things out for bid, you don't know where it's going to be. It could come much further. Or we could just take these assessments and run with them and implement them rather than looking for something much, somebody that can do it much cheaper. And, and a lot of times, we've done that dealing with the folk that we've dealt with over the years, traditional contractors, and we give these numbers and then we just go with these numbers rather than trying to bring new folk in that will do it at a much cheaper price. So, you know, I see that this is an assessment, and assessment's great, but a building like that could probably be done for far less with an open bidding process, because there's agents out there that will love to have a project of that nature and not have a guideline of making such a large sum of money for the work that they are doing, especially if somebody is just getting started. You understand what I'm saying? I know you don't. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moody, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. It was interesting in looking at the master plan back from 10 years ago, because it mentioned that the recreation center was being used to maximum capacity at that time. And looking at the events and organizations using it, most of them appear to be community-oriented. So my question is, this has been out in the public domain now for a few weeks. Has the Civic League taken an official position on this? Do we know whether they've communicated their, their desire on what, what the use of this building should be?
Personally, personally, I do not know. I don't know if they've communicated what either the city manager's office or Parks and Recreation.
Because it was, it was certainly a community facility at that time. In fact, the study described it as in fairly good condition. Of course, that's been 10 years ago, obviously, that is not the case now. But I, I think, I think it'd be interesting to see what, what the community feels about this, and maybe we could have a community charade, you know, at the facility to have people weigh in on it. But, I mean, if nobody's interested in it in the community, then obviously we, we need to get it back on the tax rolls, I guess.
Yeah, I will mention that the 2012 study that you referenced did not include any architectural or engineering evaluation for the condition or status of any facilities that were looked at.
No, it was just a general observation. It did mention that new windows had been installed at that point, but you're right, there wasn't a structural denotion there at all.
Madam City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, Councilman Moody, just in reference to the conversation, apparently they have reached out to Parks and Rec and their desire is to have it returned to a rec center.
The community's desire?
The community's desire.
Or Civic League?
The Civic League, yes, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Right, I just want to make sure I'm clear that what I was speaking to as far as the RFP was redevelopment of that property, not finding if someone can renovate it cheaper. Also, the RFP process, if there is someone interested, there would have to be some type of use permit process for this, is that correct?
So if the RFP process would basically be, you put the information out there, information about the building, information about condition and everything, so that any potential developer who might use the property, for whatever he wanted to use the property for, he or she, they have all that information, then they would propose what their, what their intent, intent was as far as redeveloping the site, whether it be a rec center, whether it be apartments, any type of other facility, what have you. They would have to go through any process like anyone else developing a site, so site plan, building permits, use permit if applicable, go through HPC, all those things that anybody else that would develop that property, even the city, if we were to make exterior repairs, would have to go through certain steps in order to make that development or property, whatever it needs to be.
Right, and part of that formal process of the use permit, that would have some type of community input through notice that would have to be given to the community as far as what project would go there.
Yeah, there's a public process, correct, sir? Yes.
So one, a couple of things I wanted to kind of just, kind of remind my colleagues on council. One, did we have a ongoing cost if we renovated the facility? Was that in this proposal, like an ongoing maintenance cost, upkeep cost of the facility? Was that included?
There's not an ongoing maintenance cost, but at its, back when it was operational, it was about $80,000 a year as far as operational cost annually.
Okay, very good. So the other thing is, if, if, if some of us, some of us were on council when we had to retreat in 2020, and I recall part of that discussion, we were talking about a comprehensive program for all of our rec facilities, because my recollection is there were a number of facilities that perhaps it would take a significant amount of dollars to restore them. Do you recall that?
Yes, sir.
I think the number was $10 million collectively, somewhere around there, perhaps?
I don't recall the collective number, but it was a large number. There were some that were recommended, two or three recommended to go in another route, then there were some that recommended to come back into and upgrade, modernize, and bring up. And so there was a sort of a demarcation point.
So, so with that, I, I think it may be probably good for council to revisit that comprehensive strategy as it relates to our recreation facilities for purposes of certainly meeting the recreation needs of our entire community, but understanding that the cost that may be associated with it, so that we can make a more informed decision. I just wanted to add that as a part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wright, Director Wright. I have four items for consideration tonight on the CMR summary. First one is CMR number 22-224, and it's an ordinance to accept the Virginia Homeless Solutions Program grant in the amount of $5,374 in the FY 2023 Grants Fund to promote community-wide efforts to end homelessness. Item number two, 22-225, an ordinance to accept one-time funding in the amount of $37,500 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services into the FY 2023 VHS operating budget to provide hiring, retention incentives, and training for staff. Item number three is 22.226, an ordinance to accept mental health block grant workforce initiative funding in the amount of $21,250 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services into the FY 2023 grant budget for the purpose of providing hiring, retention incentives, and training for VHS staff. And item number four is 22.227, an ordinance to submit an application to VDOT for the smart scale application process by the deadline of August 1st, August 1st, 2022, for potential FY 2025 funding. The funding, if approved by VDOT, will be for improvement projects for city streets and roadways. The application does not guarantee funding. That concludes, one more thing, sir, just in reference to the city manager's initiative, we have identified our first neighborhood as a pilot for the Rock the Block Initiative, which will be Prentice Park. This assessment was based on preliminary findings from the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Fellow, Ms. Nika Santos, who identified the area as one of the top neighborhoods for youth violence. And department directors and I will be attending their Civic League meeting on Monday, August the 1st, 2022, at 6:00 PM, and it will be held at the Sheriff's Training Academy, and you all are welcome to join us if your schedule permits. And that concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from my colleagues? We have now moved to the item of city council liaison reports, and are there any liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, we do have a need to go into a closed session, and would someone please read the motion?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating, litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding the taxation status of certain properties in the city jail.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Whitaker, can you state your name?
Yes, that there were certain issues pertaining to the taxation of properties that I don't think is a closed session issue because of some possible disparities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public work session. We'll reconvene at 7:00 PM for our council meeting. Thank you.